Trustees who volunteered for the Budget Levy Committee. It just says Keegan and Witt offered to volunteer, and that's one person. So, just wondering. Maybe, yeah.
For?
It's on page eight, and it's like-
August 9th?
Mm-hmm. It's like the second line of the page.
Oh, Keegan and Witt.
Yeah.
I need to, me too. Alright, so, we could just edit that. So, a motion to approve the edited minutes for August 9th. Moved by trustee Witt. Seconded by trustee Hobbins, all in favor. All trustees present. Minute approved for August 9th. Motion to approve August 16 minutes. Moved by trustee Witt, seconded by trustee Hobbins, all in favor. All trustees present. Alright, any public comment on the minutes? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number five, public comment. Public comment is a portion of the meeting that is set aside for the public to address the board as a body. It is not a time for board response or for public to ask questions. Do not infringe on the right to privacy of others. Please sign in and spell your first and last name. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. We may interrupt the individual speaker if statements are out of order and over three minutes. Any public comment? Yep, so, sign in and then state your first and last name with spelling. It will start when you start speaking.
Mine?
You have now become the new superintendent.
I don't want that responsibility yet. My name is Heather Baum. Okay, I am the president of the Chief Charlotte Elementary School Parent Teacher Organization, and I'm here tonight to tell you all thank you. Thank you for your support and participation with our playground installation this summer. And it was by far one of the more complicated projects we anticipate in the near future. And having your district help and guidance through that project was really important. And it was a good learning curve, and we just wanted to say thank you to you for that support. We look forward to collaborating on projects that might come up in the future. And there were also a few district representatives that were able to come to our grand opening. Some trustee and some employees. And so, I hope they all had a great time at our party. And just want to say thank you for what you were able to help us do for the whole community and our school. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jaclyn Vosler. Do you want me to spell that? I wrote this down because I'm a crier. Good evening, thank you for your dedication to our public education system. We really appreciate you guys. We appreciate all of you. I'm here as a classroom teacher and also as a community member. I really want to express some deep concern about the para-s shortage that we're experiencing right now. I am not sure that we yet fully grasp the impact and implications of this situation that we're dealing with. It's a shortage that impacts all of our students, but we know that it disproportionately impacts our students who are entitled to services from our special education department. We have a few specific values laid out in our strategic plan that stick out to me right now. Those are equity, inclusion, and safety. And I really worry that we cannot uphold these as a district unless we prioritize filling these critical roles. We keep hearing, "We're trying, we aren't getting applicants," but we can't stop there. Our students and our families deserve us to try differently. And my question is how I can, as a teacher in our classroom and other teachers, how can we support this process? I worry about messages that we're unintentionally sending right now. I worry we're communicating to our students who receive these services that they aren't a priority. I worry that we're communicating to their peers that it's okay to leave some of our most vulnerable community members behind when things get tough. And I worry that we're communicating to some of our hardest-working staff members that their well-being and contribution to our schools is not valued. We ultimately know what kind of trying leads to applicants, and that's money. Please correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems that we're asking people to do these jobs for less than $20,000 a year after deductions come out of their paychecks, and some are doing it for less. It's hard for me to say that we're trying when I look at these numbers. I don't know what money currently exists, where it's at, how we get it, or how we do that now. That's above my job description, I don't know that information. But if we can't get it, what kind of creative problem-solving can we explore together? I know my frustration's probably palpable. We have a responsibility to serve our kids well, and there are systemic limitations making that really hard to do right now. We're a district that aims to be student-centered. It's in our strategic plan. We need your help. In the meantime, I would invite you to come into our schools to observe what it's like to be a child who cannot fully participate in your education right now, and to shadow our parent teams before we make future decisions about their compensation. I'm worried about our students becoming disengaged from this year, and it's going to impact them long into the future if we don't really find some solutions. And I'm willing to help however that's possible. Thank you for listening.
Any more public comment? Alright, seeing none, we will move forward on to item number six, which is our Community Connection. And I will introduce Spark Director Sienna Solberg and MCTS Art Director, Art Education Director, Monty Grize.
Is that right? Ooh, there you are. Thank you. It's great to be here. Monty Grize, Arts Education Director, and Sienna, of course. We're very grateful to be here this evening. We're here to essentially celebrate Arts and Education Week. And it's a nice time to kind of focus and share some of the things that we do in the school district. And I just want to say, MCTS and Spark partner together to ensure that all of the students receive an equitable access to a thriving and comprehensive arts education. And what that means is they each receive an Arts as Curriculum experience. They receive an art-integrated experience, and they also receive specific experiences, artistic experiences, for each grade level. Every year, each K-8 student gets music instruction, visual art instruction, an arts-integrated residency taught by one of the Spark teaching artists, and also a curated, specific experience, professional experience for each grade level, K-8. An example would be the kindergarten receive a puppetry experience. And next week is the Missoula Children's Theater production of The Rainbow Fish. And the 2nd grade will all travel to the theater and see that performance. Later on in the, another example is later on in the year, the 4th grade will attend the symphony. So those are some of those experiences, and each one is specific to that grade level, K-8. I, of course, would love to talk about this all night long and share these things with you, but we thought it would be best and more valuable to actually hear from some of the students who benefit from these experiences. So, I'd like to take a second and invite a couple of these students up to share with you. First up, we'd like to invite Izzy, and Izzy is a 6th grader at Porter, who was a 5th grader who got to receive the great teaching of one of our visual art teachers at Hawthorne last year. And that's Morgan Legary, and she'll be, she's here too. So, I'd like to invite both Ms. Legary and Izzy up, and Izzy will talk a little bit.
Hi, my name is Izzy, I'm a 6th grader at CS Porter Middle School, and here are a few reasons why I think art class at school is important. First off, I really love art. It's a beautiful way to express yourself. I feel lucky that we have the opportunity to do it at school. No matter what your skill level is, art is a fun space to be creative and show your classmates your ideas and thoughts. Art class is a nice break from our straightforward subjects such as math, and allows you to make a few creative choices. While making these projects, you get to customize and make them your own. I feel like it's different from making art at home because you get to collaborate and share ideas with classmates, which is an important life skill. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, I'd like to invite Kiran up. Kiran is a 5th grade student from Hawthorne, and his teacher is Ms. Brenda Griggs. Come on up.
Hi, my name is Kiran McGrath, and I am a 5th grader in Hawthorne Elementary. I like that we get to play instruments because it helps calm a lot of kids down and helps them focus. I also like the teachers, they are so energetic in a positive way. I like music because it is a class that lets me use a different part of my brain. Lots of kids really love music and listening to it, but most of all, I know everybody loves making it. Thank you.
So, I'm going to read a testimonial from a teacher that I got, and then we'll get to see a little bit of an arts-integration residency from Spark. But both Russell, 2nd grade, and Paxton, 1st grade, had Spark Arts teaching artist Kelly Boma integrate filmmaking and ELA standards last year. And Jenny Malloy, Russell's 2nd grade teacher, says, "Over the course of a week, Kelly was able to coach our students and help them use literacy skills we'd been practicing in order to create short films. They learned how filmmakers practice visual storytelling. Each and every student found a way to comfortably and actively collaborate, communicate, and participate to make our film come to life. Some students opted to be behind the scenes and soaked up the opportunity to act in front of the camera. As a culminating event, we were able to bus our students to meet their families and guests at the Roxy Theater where they walked the red carpet and posed for the paparazzi. And we were able to turn this collaboration into a family engagement event. We were able to connect and celebrate with families that hadn't been to the school all year." And James over at Paxton, who's now a 2nd grader, a 1st grader, last year, says, "Making a movie was a very fun part of 1st grade. We learned about how to write a script together. That part was hard because there were some good ideas I liked that didn't make it in. We learned that movies are recorded in pieces, like different scenes. For scene one, take one, we nailed it on the first try. For other ones, we needed to try a few times, and we kept trying and got it. Some people did the microphones, and some were on the camera, and some made costumes. And I was an actor and got to play a bunny DJ." Here's a short clip of one of the 2nd grade films. Thanks, Tyler. And then, as Monty mentioned, a part of the arts ed ecosystem are the arts experiences. And I just wanted to invite you all to the 2nd grade Spark Arts Experience next week at MCT. Like Monty said, it's Rainbow Fish. And it's next week, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, at 9:30 at MCT. So if you'd like to see a Spark Arts Experience, please join us next week.
We just, again, thank you for taking the time to have us this evening. And just again, we're so grateful to be in this community and with this kind of support for the arts. It's a really amazing and unique thing, and we're very grateful for it. I wanted to close out with another student. This is Bonnie, she is a 7th grader, 7th grade at Washington. And she's in the orchestra under Eric Winstrom there. And I'll let her introduce what she's going to do.
Hi, I'm Bonnie, I'll be playing Chardis for violin.
Wow, all of you did awesome, thank you for presenting that to us. We'll move on to item number seven, reports and announcements from Superintendent Lodge.
Good evening, everybody, I just have two announcements tonight. I'd like, I'd let you know that we are moving forward on the superintendent search. So this Thursday, the applicants' applications will be reviewed, and we're going to go spend an hour or so doing that. They'll be scored, and then the following week, the interviews will take place. And then, following that, at our next board meeting on the 27th, you will vote to decide which one you'd like to choose. But I'm sure there's going to be a recommendation coming out of the committee that's going to do that. So, that is in full gear, I wanted to let you know that. I also want to let you know that it's been a while since we've met, as you know, but I think I'd be remiss if I didn't say that on August 25th, we had 1,300 people all employed by Missoula County Public Schools, plus people from many of our outside community partners listening to a five-hour presentation on wellness and self-care. And the feedback that we received was positive across the board, and has set the tone for this school year in rebuilding relationships and managing ourselves, and then, of course, letting the academic part of it take its course as we build the relationships that eventually lead into academics. So, it was really powerful. I don't know that I've had an experience in my career, and I've been at it a while, where everybody was involved, teachers, classified folks, buildings and grounds, kitchen. There wasn't a group that we missed. So, and it's recorded, if you'd like to see it, if you'd like to see the slide decks, it's all available to you. But that five hours is well-served, and in addition to that, it's not a one-time thing. We have, we're bringing this consultant back three or four times this school year, including one day in February where she's with us all day, other days where we have office hours, so to speak. And then we are already planning for next year in the same vein. So, it was really powerful, I wouldn't, I really can't say that enough. It's made a big difference in the tone and the way this year has started, so, wanted to let you know that. And those are the two things I have to report.
Alright, now we'll move on to item eight, the Consent Agenda, and we will only be doing the elementary. There is no board discussion for the consent agenda items, as these are routine items. If any board member wants to discuss an item on the consent agenda, a motion will need to be made and seconded. The elementary motion, I need, sorry, guys. Elementary trustee needs to move the elementary consent agenda. Moved by trustee Hobbins. Seconded by trustee Witt. All elementary trustees in favor? Oh, whicher. There's two, Keegan and Witt. That's where I'm at, guys, okay.
Sounds like a company, Keegan and Witt.
CPAs. Motion passed. The consent agenda for the elementary portion has been passed, and now we're moved on to item A. Is that right? Is mine wrong?
Correct, we got item A. Well, you've got another elementary vote to take on-
Oh, the ratify. Sorry, guys, I have two, I need to- Oh, okay. Alright, so now we're moving on to item A, Finance, Operation, and Maintenance. A1 is Ratify Out-of-District Agreements for Elementary Only. So- Yep, and it's part of the consent agenda. But then we already approved it, right? If we did the-
We're on nine?
Yeah, I was confused too, sorry, guys. So now we're on to nine, which is New Business Information and Action. A1 is Lease of Classroom Space at Lowell Elementary by the Head Start. And it wants me to introduce Pat, but Pat is not here. Oh, is he on Zoom? I can't see, so, alright, go ahead, Mr. McHugh. Pat, we cannot hear you. They are working on it.
Sure, thanks, Brian. Can you hear me? Alright, thank you, Chair Old Person. The, I couldn't quite hear, so I wasn't sure if you got both the elementary and the high school on the consent.
Wait, we do not have a high school quorum.
Oh, sounds good. So, this agenda item, the lease of classroom space at Lowell Elementary, this involves a lease between MCTS and Head Start. And this provides Head Start the opportunity to offer pre-K programming directly at Lowell. This is in addition to the programming that they offer in our building at Whittier. The idea, this began last school year, but the idea was to support kids in the Lowell attendance area. The, this is an area identified by Head Start as a high-needs area for Head Start programming. The lease is for the school year only, and it's a renewal of the lease that we had last year with Head Start. year only, and it's a renewal of the lease that we had last year with Head Start. It's essentially a free lease with the covenants that are outlined within the lease agreement that's attached to the agenda. The, I think this is a good opportunity, as I understand it, for students to participate who wouldn't otherwise participate either at Jefferson or at, at the Head Start facility. So we would continue to, if the board approves this, to lease this, these classroom spaces to Head Start for the school year only, and then evaluate the space needs of the school on an annual basis. Happy to answer any questions.
Yep. Any questions by any trustees? I have a question. Can you discuss, maybe you are Superintendent Lodge, on if there's any, if we will need the space eventually at Lowell for our students?
It's, it's, it's possible that we would need the space with the development near Lowell, which is part of the reason it's a, it's a year-to-year lease that we're talking about. I think there's been lots of discussion about the potential growth of Lowell School with the improvements going in around that school building.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Seen none. Motion from an elementary trustee on the recommendation that we approve the lease addendum with the Head Start in the form attached to use two rooms to operate the pre-K program to benefit children three to five years of age within the MCPS boundary and MCPS boundary feeder schools. Moved by trustee Witcher. Seconded by trustee Hobbins. All elementary trustees in favor? Unanimous to all elementary trustees present. Motion's passed. Any public comment? Seen none. That was supposed to go before, guys. All right. Now we're on to, we will not do the individual transportation contract because that is a high school vote, so we'll skip that. And now we'll move on to item B, personnel negotiation and policies. And we will only approve the elementary due to the lack of high school trustees present. And I'll just pass it over to Mr. Lodge.
And I will kick it to Mr. Roth.
Can you repeat that, please?
There we go. The elementary report is on page 30 to 32. And the high school report, we will simply append on and bring to the next school board meeting. Otherwise, the reports are your typical monthly personnel reports.
Thank you, Dave. So I will go ahead and see if there's any questions by any trustees. Seen none. And I will need an elementary motion to approve the items on the provided packet for the elementary personnel report. Moved by trustee Hobbins. Seconded by trustee Witt. Any public comment? Seen none. All those elementary trustees in favor of approving the personnel report, please indicate by raising your hand. Unanimous to all elementary trustee present. And the time is 6:39, and that concludes our meeting. Thank you, everyone.